Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Want to lead us off there?
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our
All right, we'll take a roll call.
Troy Anderson.
Present.
Patrick Bee.
Present.
Wayne Bebo.
Present.
Eric Diop. John Fairchild.
Here.
Kristen Cadway.
Here.
Cory Jolliker.
Present.
Jason Miller.
Present.
Nina Trudeau.
Here.
Ozzy Kelman.
Thank you, Chelsea. Approvals of the agenda. Resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the agenda. Have a motion?
Wayne. Chris.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Presentations. Topic 2025-2026 budget. It's going to be the Superintendent Dustin Relation and our Business Manager Jen Parliament.
Excuse me, I never do it from here.
Well, then you.
We're okay here. Well, actually, we probably should, because you guys are going to want to be able to see. We'll move over here. So I'll kick it off a little bit here to kind of the overall fun thing. Jen, a lot for work so far on this. And secondarily, Jen is here because I asked her to stay for this part, and then she couldn't leave because her daughter has a basketball game tonight, and she wants to see her daughter. But I appreciate her coming and helping with this presentation. So, you know, I said this to the boardrooms already. This is super early in the budget development process. Like, there's very few numbers we have even available and therefore finalized for. So just keep that in mind as we go through some of this. You know, we have an estimate for the Foundation Aid formula if it runs exactly as it's supposed to, but if anyone's been watching anything recently, that Foundation Aid study, all of that is subject to some conversation. Also, the governor gave her State of the State today. I watched it on repeat a little bit later this afternoon. There was some really interesting music and some dance. So if you want to watch the governor's State of the State, it was very interesting. So that's just aside commentary piece. But in that, she had a release of the State of the State. And I will tell you, the word "school" appeared 57 times throughout her entire presentation. This is very preliminary. We could tell you what the Foundation Aid formula would run as, but that number's going to change. The governor's proposed budget always comes in low, and then the legislature gets involved, and then somewhere they need in the middle. That's the process with the budget. It's what happens every single year. Couple things for us as Jen presents a little bit on the budget itself. We have a rotation for bus purchases. Sub years is three, four, three, four, goes back and forth. This is a four-bus purchase year, and one of the buses this year is wheelchair accessible. So that leaves the bus a little bit more expensive, something to keep in mind as you look at the differences in some of the numbers that Jen's going to present. Also, we don't have certain numbers. Health insurance costs, for example, that hasn't been set yet. Some of the retirement systems haven't given us the new numbers for next year, so just keep that in mind. This is, as Jen said to me this morning, this is the crystal ball we'll get that the budget will look like in future years, and it's going to change a lot over the next several weeks and months, but this is a starting point for us. And with that, I'm going to thank Jen again for agreeing to stay and miss a little bit of the game. She's going to hit some of the numbers with us.
Yeah, so I'm just going to do a really broad overview because everything is so up in the air at this point. We do definitely do some educated guesses to put in here so you guys have an idea of where we're going to land. I don't think we're astronomically far off. So our tax levy limit is probably, we're getting close. So by next board meeting, this will be finalized. Here, it is, you take your prior year tax levy, our tax-based growth factor is in, that is accurate. Our pilots that we budgeted for this year is obviously accurate. Our capital exclusions from this current year are all in there. CPI is 2%. So you can go down just a little bit, Chelsea, please. Thank you. Pilots projected for next fiscal year, and that's one I want to hit on. You can see that it changed drastically from 606 to 172. Serenac Power Partners is now off our pilot program as of right now. They haven't yet. Last year, they put in an addendum to continue it on for a year. They have not done that so far this year. So that's, you know, it looks bad, but that means they're going back on their tax roll at full value, which is a good thing. So even though it looks like we're losing money, we're really not. We're going to gain it in our tax roll, on our tax roll instead. So that's why there's that big discrepancy there. Now, you can see that 260 from capital exclusions for next year is highlighted in yellow. That number is just a prediction at that time. That number, that's the number that's going to change, for sure. It's not going to change drastically, but it is going to change. We don't have all of our finalized numbers in for capital exclusions for next year. From BOSI, our BOSI's capital's not in. I don't have all my numbers from fiscal audits for our capital projects, payments in the future. So that number is going to change. But again, we're in the ballpark. So this is just giving you guys what we're looking at. So what we're looking at right now, if all these numbers were to stay exactly as is, our tax levy limit would go from the 24.2 million to the 25.1 million, which is an increase of almost $900,000 or 3.71%. So that's what we're looking at at this moment in time. Any questions?
So getting tax revenue from the power company because they would be now, that's what you're saying, right?
Yeah, it's put back on the tax roll versus getting a pilot.
That's going to make up a $400,000 deficit.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Pilots are very discounted. It's to bring big business into town. They get a very big discount, which we don't like pilots because that hurts us. So now it's coming off, and it's going on full value for the tax roll. It's going to be, I don't know what they valued it at yet, because the assessments aren't out, obviously, for next year, but it would, I know it looks scary, but it's a good thing.
Is it possible that they could get another pilot?
They could do another amendment, but we, last year, we had it. We had it by December. So I'm thinking if we don't have it yet, we're probably not going to do it again. Or they've already tried and have been turned down.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Yep. So the next one we're going to do, this is our five-year. Yep. Did you get that one? Five years? Did you share it with Karen? If not, we can just talk about the five years.
Do you want to do that?
We can.
I can share it with her while you're talking.
Okay.
And then she'll have it to pull up.
Our next slide, which you guys have all seen before, the five-year comparison that we do, it's, this is the real crystal ball stuff where we're just, we're putting in some estimates. One thing you need to remember is we're starting out with a rollover budget. A rollover budget means we're just taking everything we have and did this year, people-wise, contract-wise, everything else, and rolling it forward. There's nothing new added on when we start. So what you'll be looking at is it's just a rollover budget. The big changes, TRS is looking at 9.5% to 10%, which is actually a teeny-tiny decrease in TRS, Teachers Retirement System, but our ERS, Employees Retirement System, is going up significantly from 15.2% to 16.5%. So, but that's not set, those don't yet either. Those are all their estimates at this time. Health insurance, we're estimating 10%, hoping it's going to be less, because when you're looking at a 10% increase on our health insurance, that's almost $1.2 million, just in health insurance increase. But that, I'm hoping, is worst-case scenario, so I'm hoping it will come in less than that. But what we're showing you is, we want you guys to know the worst-case scenario, so hopefully we plan for the worst, but hopefully the best. Again, the four buses makes a big difference, obviously. It's about a swing of 100, I think it's $150,000, because we're not only going from three to four, we're going with one as a handicap bus, which is obviously more expensive. So that'll be an increase in our budget as well. We are trading five buses to offset some of the costs. There are ones that we have deemed that can go, and I think, I'm not positive, but I'm 99% sure Cory had said, our last two diesel buses will be gone and will be completely gas. So as we said before, the state aid number that you see on there, we're using a 2% estimate right now. Again, that's our, to me, it's, Dustin and I talked about it, that's our comfortable spot to guess what they might give us at this point. It could be more, which I would greatly appreciate, and so would everybody else. We're looking at fund bouts of using $2 million. Appropriated debt service, $300,000. These are all estimates. You know, we're going to play it by ear as we go to see what we can and cannot do. But this is, again, very preliminary. All these numbers on this screen are guaranteed going to change. The only thing I think that will change is the pilot number, because we got the pilots from the town.
Greg, did you say the new buses are going to be gas?
They've been purchasing gas for, diesel, like I said, our last two diesel will be off, we'll be trading our last two diesel.
I heard they were getting rid of the diesels, but I didn't know with new purchases if we were looking at gas, electric, hybrid, what the plan is.
We don't have any place to charge an electric bus, so we've got to work on our infrastructure first before we can purchase a bus. But that is something, we're starting our study to see what we can and cannot do, what our infrastructure can handle, what it can't handle, going from there.
Yeah, there's a feasibility study that school districts are embarking on right now. We qualify for, I think it's the whole thing being done for free because of our, you know, our district as a whole, because everyone knows the electric bus mandate 2027, you know, start purchasing electric buses 2035, your entire fleet needs to be rollover. That's garnered a lot of attention in this legislative process, you know, starting out this year, because what we're recognizing is it could be a great idea in theory, but depending on the region, there's more or less possibility for that to be successful. And beyond that, the cost is significantly different for an electric bus versus a gas or diesel-powered bus. Sometimes two, if not two and a half times as expensive. And to Jen's point, you need the infrastructure to be able to support charging all of those buses. So that's what this study does. It also looks at, does your power grid support what you will need for the charging infrastructure? Those are all things that we need to figure out. And we know that our transition department and facility will need some updates or potential major renovations or changes. But we don't want to do that until we know what this looks like. And I, again, my crystal ball from the political side, there's going to be some conversation about, should we change that mandate a little bit? The other thing is in the Foundation Aid study, there was commentary on this and the fact that if the state's saying that we have to move to electric buses, the state should be fully funding that transition for us and not saying like, you're going to get some percentage of aid for your buses, because they are mandating it for us. It's another unfunded mandate in many ways. So we'll see kind of where that plays out. But we are going to start the study. We're at a point now where we're going to, we have to do that, but we want to see what happens.
And the other big thing with us here in our area is the mileage we put on our buses, because we're looking at the mileage we put on our buses, we may have to get one and a half times the amount of buses we have in order to sustain mileage. And we don't even house all of our buses here now. So where would we put all these buses if this happens?
Does that add drivers as well? Because that's another challenge we have, correct?
Oh, it shouldn't add drivers.
So you're going to come back with a bus and hop in a different bus and do another run?
Depending on how long their run is and how cold it is that day, and you got it.
But I didn't know if we needed to have another driver.
No.
Okay.
No, we shouldn't, but they may have to swap. That's why we may need one and a half times the amount of buses we have now, because of the mileage we put on our buses may not work for, we may not be able to place 38 buses with another 38 buses and be able to do what we do.
And my understanding is, that study will also give us that information in terms of routes, like what the routes might need to be redesigned to look like as a suggestion for us to be as efficient as we can be with our buses.
If they made our routes much smaller, it said, oh, well, your route, you've got to change it, well, then I may need more drivers, which is, as we all know, an impossible feat. So, yeah, there's a lot of scary things happening with that. Any other questions, concerns, comments? So next month, we'll really be getting, like I said, the tax levy limit will, I'll have a finalized tax levy limit for you, and we'll be, we'll have a lot more numbers. The governor should have her numbers out, I'm hoping, by the end of the week.
I would assume so. Normally, it's been the week or the state of the state.
And that's our worst-case scenario, and that's where we always start from and go from there. So. Good?
You could go, Jen.
Okay. Go Eagles.
Thank you. Thanks, Chelsea.
PHS.
PHS. I couldn't see who asked the question. Okay. I think I heard someone over there. That's much better. A little bright, but much better.
You had your own report, Greg.
I do, yes. I'm going to, it's a little more brief than normal.
Yep.
All right. We'll go on to reports. Superintendent Schools, Dustin Relation.
We'll try to be a little more brief because we already had a presentation that I participated in. First, strategic planning update. So over break, I received a preliminary report from Alabreve, who's our consulting firm. The goal of me seeing it was to say, is everything in here clearly articulated and understandable when it goes out to our strategic planning committee? There were a couple of things. At one point, it said students, but I didn't know if it meant middle school, high school, elementary, or in other parts of it, it was clearly articulated. So I provided that feedback. Met with them last Friday. We reviewed the changes that needed to be made to make it more clear. And then our strategic planning committee received a copy of the full confidential report, which has a lot of data tables that, in these processes, when you release an entire confidential report with all the data tables, arguably, some people will focus on one little piece rather than the whole picture. So our strategic planning committee gets the entire report so they can dive down into the data to make some really good informed decisions. We will meet as a committee tomorrow afternoon to complete what's called a strength, weaknesses, opportunities, and threat assessment of this plan. So that entire community, our committee will get together, go through that process with our consultant firm, and then our board will do the same thing. And then the next phase is to say, okay, what does the board see? What does the strategic planning committee see? Where is their alignment? For us to say, these are the overarching pieces that we really want to focus on as we develop our year-one goals at the district level, and then build down to what the buildings will do as well. Because this is not just the district-level committee creates a plan and we all follow it. There is also going to be parts where the buildings might do things slightly differently to meet that overarching goal. Super excited that we're at this point, that we have the data, and now we're diving into it. Also, a little bit stressed that it is getting into budget season as we're doing this part two, but we're going to make it through, and I'm excited to be able to have those conversations. I can't wait till tomorrow night to sit with the strategic planning committee and literally say, okay, what do you think about this, and have those conversations. It's great that we're at this point, and we really are on target for our dates overall. I know, I know it seems like there's a little bit of a delay from surveys and then getting the information, but we really still are on target at this point in time. And the strategic planning committee knows we're going to have a lot of meetings between now and over the next couple of months to make sure that we're on track to, to get this all finalized before the school year. So we're ready to jump into the summer with some PD opportunities. And I just want to, again, thank the committee for their commitment to this and to the board for making sure this was a priority for us right from the beginning. There will be an executive summary that is produced for the public as well as a slide presentation. So the February meeting is when I will give that presentation, and the strategic planning committee doesn't know this yet, but I'd love for them to participate in that presentation because they are part of the process. I want to make sure we have all of our voices heard, and it's not just coming from me directly. So I'm excited about that opportunity. Hopefully, I get some volunteers for that. Second, January 2nd, Staff Development Day. I just want to acknowledge the immense amount of work that went into planning for that day from our administrative team, our, you know, AV, our IT department, our maintenance and facilities, our administrators, everyone who was involved, including the presenters, because we had administrators presenting, we had teachers presenting. It was amazing to watch this cycle of people moving from one session to the next. I probably sat longer than I needed to in most of the sessions just because I wanted to see what it was like, but it was super exciting to be part of the process and conversation. And just a huge thanks to everyone who organized it and for the participants as well. I also want to acknowledge our union leaders for allowing some conversation about flexing the time a little bit so we could start that mandated child abuse reporter training. That was huge to give staff some time during the workday to start working on that, and that was in large part thanks to working with the union leaders on how we could kind of carve out some time. It was really helpful, and that's the type of stuff that I want to see continue to happen because I think that fosters really good relationships. The last thing, just a quick update, the board did receive this, but the gray sewer line, all fixed, we're good to go. We're going to put it on a maintenance schedule. It's just an interesting line in and of its own, so we've got that taken care of. And I just want to highlight, we literally, from the time that I was notified until we had kids getting on buses, it was an hour, which is unbelievably impressive that we were able to put that into action. There's some hiccups. We've debriefed on it internally with the administrative teams and things we can work on, but overall, I was astonished to have almost 1,000 kids being able to be moved off the middle school and high school in less than an hour. Huge thanks to our transportation department. I mean, they were here within a half hour. Buses were showing up within a half hour, which was impressive. And I also want to acknowledge our building and maintenance staff. I was here until nine o'clock that Thursday night with them, and we kept snaking the drain and just couldn't get it fixed. But they stayed, they came back, or they stayed, and they were here on Saturday getting it all finalized. So just want to acknowledge that as well.
My kids were a little disappointed because they were under the impression that you could potentially have off on Friday? So I had to break that news to them.
I was weighing it back and forth, and we're like, no, we can isolate the line, and I know I disappointed some people. But thank you.
Good to go.
We are good.
Awesome. We're going to go on to our building principals. Mr. Bazile.
Good evening, everybody. January's a really busy week for high school. We got a lot going on. You've probably seen some of my messaging, some of the things coming out from Harren Square. One of the cool events we had to start off the new year was the senior trip. We spent some time in New York City. Kids got the opportunity to go to the Rockefeller Center. They got to skate, see the Christmas tree. We had the opportunity to go see a Broadway show, Aladdin. Went to the Hard Rock Cafe. We went to Statue of Liberty, all within really a day and a half. So it was a lot packed in there. I don't know how many times I counted to 63 with our students to make sure we had everybody all the time in New York City. So it was nice. I got back, I was pretty tired, but it was a wonderful opportunity. I see that he's got a shirt on over there that we, we got in the stores over there, says some time to shop too as well. So it was a really cool opportunity. It's really nice for me, too, because I get to spend some time with our seniors before they graduate in a different setting than the school building. So I really enjoyed that opportunity. January Region Week starts next Tuesday. We do offer every single Regents exam here at Beaventown. We do offer the January Regents too for English students. Been really successful. This is due in three. Most students take the exam in January. They also have another opportunity to take that exam in June. We've had a huge success rate on that, over 95% every year that we take it in January. It also gives us the opportunity for students to, and our teachers to look at the data to receive for the January Regents and really pinpoint areas those students need to be successful in doing. Again, we offer, like I said, every single Regents exam. Most of those Regents exams, our students said, struggle maybe in August, or they want to take the exam to kind of see the exam. If you saw my parents square, we are offering students the ability to take the US history or global Regents if they choose to do that. They don't have to. Again, that's a practice exam for them. They kind of sit for a Regents exam and see the test. We also have next week, we get all of our academic boot camps. So these are students that are failing a course at this time. They're going to come in for the week. They don't get off or anything like that. They're going to come in here and get work done based on their teachers and things like that to get caught up by the end of the quarter, which is going to be on the 29th of January for us, too. So that's a good opportunity for our kids to come in. I want to say for staff, it's a busy week, a lot going on between proper exams, Regents exams, and our boot camp. So tips off to everybody that is participating in that. Last thing I had is we started our Course Awareness Fair. That is basically our teachers present to our students during ELT all the courses we offer here at Beaventown. It's a really cool experience because we get, sometimes we get students to present to as well, but it gives our kids the opportunity to really see what we offer. And when they do the course selections here in February with our counselors, they have a little bit of an idea of what the courses are because of teacher different time. So again, busy week. Any questions for me?
One question. I was asked the other day about, I know we have a lot of classes where you can, you can receive college credits. How many, do you have any idea, even rough number?
27.
27?
27 possibilities. So we have, you know.
27 classes or 27?
Yeah, 27 classes between AP, Syracuse University, Paul Smith, and Click Community College. We offer all those entities, so there's 27 different opportunities. The AP courses, obviously, they get a three or higher on the exam to get that course credit, but they have the opportunity to get course credit and take those classes as AP or a little, you know, so.
Gotcha.
Yeah, 27 different opportunities.
Awesome. Thank you.
And those are all, thanks to our board and our district, are all paid for for our students. So that's a pretty amazing thing that doesn't happen.
And as far as you know, Matt, those are all accepted at any SUNY institution, any of the universities you just mentioned, right?
Yeah, we have, we have a student who went to Albany, and they talked, two years ago, that had 47 credits going into Albany.
Nice.
You know, so really starting as a sophomore.
Huge, huge savings as well, if it could be. It's a lot of money.
It does set us apart with your transcripts and things like that, and applying to colleges and things like that. So it's been, it's been great. So I guess 27 opportunities, I've looked at against anybody in this whole area, and probably here to, here at Albany and Syracuse, there's not many more opportunities than we have here.
Thanks, Ben.
Awesome. Thank you, Matt.
Ms. Soutinger.
I didn't realize we had that many classes, 20 sat out. I'd like to, I'd like to have more. I don't think we can do it.
Good evening. We are excited to see you offering dental services at Cumberland Head and at Beaventown Elementary School through Hudson Headwaters. So Hudson Headwaters presented to each classroom when they handed out consent forms back in October. We've had about 150 students sign up for the services. Students are in the process right now of getting basic cleaning and a dental exam. And I want to thank our ed tech department, the custodial, the maintenance crew, and our secretarial staff for doing the extra work to make that happen for our students. The dental visit's starting January 6th, and they are going to wrap up this Tuesday. Today, our commensurate restorative practices coach, Timothy Lyon, attended Cumberland Head and Beaventown Middle School. He presented a basic overview to staff and gave them a chance to participate in community building circles. He then led the circles for grades kindergarten and second grade. Relationship and community building is the core of restorative practices, so that's where our Restorative Practices Committee decided to start our learning. We look forward to having him back to the district again in February, and he'll trade off and work with DES and Beaventown Middle School, and then he'll come and join us again in March in Cumberland Head. Computer-based testing simulation is going to take place on January 23rd. The purpose of it is to test our infrastructure and give our students the opportunity to experience the test, hopefully kind of settle their nerves a little bit, although it is a nerve-wracking experience. Students in grades three through five that are working with their classroom teacher and our library media specialist to learn the testing platforms. Mary Swanson, our district-level testing coordinator, on a trail in December. She's a wonderful resource, so people probably shout out to Mary Swanson. And a group of teachers have signed up for another book study at Cumberland Head, led led by Jolie Donahue and Nicole Mitchell. The book is titled Connections Over Compliance. So far, there are almost 15 participants. Teachers will meet eight sessions prior to school, and I appreciate the hosts and all of the teachers who are willing to continue to grow as professionals. A lot going on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our ex officio, Ozzy Kellman?
Sorry, I wasn't able to get mine. That's why it's not working. This month, I met with students from both the Beaventown Middle School and elementary. Starting off with middle school, I had a chance to meet, again, the middle school student council. They immediately told me about all the fun, like, holiday competitions and stuff like that, that they were having in their middle school before break. They mentioned a toy drive, which the seventh grader won, alongside a really fun door decorating contest, which I got to see a little bit of, with teachers and administrators voting on who had the best door, which it came down so close apparently that there was a tiebreaker voting with people from the, like, district office having to come in and vote, breaking the tie between a few doors. Sorry. There's also the same day knockout contest between each of the grade levels and some of the teachers, with the winner being Brandon St. John and the runner-up being Nate Beatrice. I'm hoping I'm giving that right. He got second, and the students were very proud, boasting about their win over some of the adults that were in the competition. The attendance challenge this month was individual instead of class versus class or grade versus grade, and it involves students getting rewarded with pajama day, hat day, stuff like that, just like kind of more like personal rewards if they got under a certain amount of days they missed, which I was talking to Ms. Nelson about. It's a lot of success with the, like, individual focus seeming to bring up student attendance a lot, so that's something that's really good to see. The students also put a lot of focus in talking about the midterm exams that are coming up, in the eighth grade especially, taking place this coming week, I'm pretty sure, or the week after. And the same students are also excited that they will have a new semester, new semester and therefore new schedules coming after that January Regents' break, or, for break for us, not for them. But they're excited about their second quarter sched, or semester schedules. They also mentioned some smaller stuff, like being involved in, a lot of middle school students are involved in the Winter Concert, which happened last month, and some of the other artistic endeavors that are happening, that some are bleeding into the high school, like the play that is being put on, SpongeBob Musical, very excited about that. Some of the middle schools are involved in working on that. They also mentioned the FAS bridge assessment, which is coming up, which allows students to see kind of where they're at in math and English, which are the two subjects being tested. And it also allows students that may be struggling to get help in the form of like a math lab in the second semester, which is something that's like really useful for students, some students that may need the help. So they're very excited. That's happening across the entire middle school. Alongside that, they mentioned, well, they were working on it when I actually walked in, a new system of the exceptional equal cards, where basically if a student has less than three absences in a quarter, no referrals, and above 80% average, they are going to be able to have, like, a basically like a rewards card that has like food discounts, dance discounts, a lot of the stuff like the students need. And the student council actually had a hand in kind of making and choosing some of the prizes. So there are actual prizes that the students are really excited about. And with the criteria chosen, it's specific to kind of reward, instead of just like the students that are academically achieving, it's the students that are really putting in the effort with going to school as much as they can, not getting referrals, really just putting that consistent effort into their success every day, which the middle school students are very excited about. For the elementary school, I met with three students, Emily Moran, Noa Facto, and Juan Facto. I hope I'm getting their names right. They were very proud of their own school's charitable contributions, they, that they had over the time period. They're telling me about a very successful food drive that they sent a lot of the food that they could, that they collected, donated it to a food pantry at the town hall. They're very excited about that. Along with kind of a cool fundraiser, at least I thought it was really cool, where they had a kickball tournament, and the entry fee was like a present, and they donated all of these presents to a nursing home, which I thought was really, really cool, which they brought, they wrapped and then brought over before Christmas. They also told me about some of the fun activities they had the day before winter break, like a singing Santa, some of the fun day activities, they'd expect stations, stuff like that, along with another, in November, they had like a cool movie day, the day before Thanksgiving break, which they were, they thought was awesome. Alongside that, I was able to check out the snowman mural they have near the elementary office. It was standing for about a month, and it basically was put together by student council to kind of celebrate like some of the cool contributions that were happening throughout the school, academic success, creative success. And it was made by the student council, but like kind of decorated by them. And they, there's a lot of school spirit around that, so they're very excited about that. They also told me about some of the new responsibilities that they're getting and being able to participate in. For one, they started doing a rotation for announcements, which I can tell you, I've been doing announcements two years, really hard. I'm really impressed that as like an elementary student, they can do it, where they're doing the pledge and some of the introductory stuff before the person who usually does the announcements goes on, does the rest. But it's still really cool that they're getting involved in that. Along with that, they have been taking time out of their day to run a talent ticket cart, which is just like another extra level to that reward aspect, where students can earn talent tickets, and they actually take them to the student council talent ticket cart ran by them, and they can exchange it for prizes, for cool stuff, similar to like the equal punch cards. I think it's like hat days, stuff like, like, I think there's a pizza party one, if I remember correctly, but that was when I was at that age, so I don't know if it's still the same. So it's something to kind of reward students who are being really good behaviorally and academically. Alongside this, they mentioned some new rewards, awards that are in their spirit, like their equal pride assemblies. So instead of just rewarding a student every month, teachers nominating them, they have two new awards, the LAMP award and the Golden Spatula award. The Golden Spatula is for if a class has really good behavior in the cafeteria, and the LAMP award is like a little bit above that, where it's like a class that is, has good behavior in lunch, R music, and PE, that's an acronym for LAMP. If they have great behavior in that, they get that award. They're very, very proud. I was told Miss Miller's class won that, this past equal pride assembly, and there's a lot of pride in that. You get a little bit of bragging rights, but they also got a extra reward of some extra time in recess or PE. I'm not 100% sure on that one. I just know they got some extra time in like a fun activity kind of way. And overall, there's like a lot of things between the two schools rewarding students for just being good students, and students are kind of taking note of this and are getting really excited to kind of participate in that, which is going to have a ripple effect into just creating a lot of better behavior and more activity within the school.
Awesome. Thanks, Ozzy.
Thanks, Ozzy. Thank you so much. Ozzy, aren't you part of Model UN?
I am, yeah.
And do you have an event coming up?
We have Harvard Model Run at the end of January, and then we have North Country Model Run at the end of...
Harvard Model UN. Can you tell us just a little bit about that real quick? I think, is that next week or the following week?
Uh, it's the following week.
And where are you going, and how many schools, and how many kids, and et cetera?
We're sending 10 kids this year, because we, it's like, it's very difficult to get on the team. We are very strict about who can go and who can't. So we're taking 10 students from across the high school, and we're going to Boston for about a week. It's the week right after the Regents' week, so it's, we're leaving the 28th and coming back the second or third of February. And at that conference, there's hundreds of schools. I know there's over, there's almost 100 schools from like Brazil alone. They don't organize it by the area the schools are from, they organize it by the country. There's over 5,000 delegates there, so...
Where's it held at, Ozzy?
Very proud.
Where is it held at, do you know?
It's held at the Sheraton. It's some, some parts are in the Sheraton, and some parts are in Harvard campus itself, depending on the conference committee and day. But most of it is at like a Sheraton hotel that the entire conference runs south for the week.
Outstanding. Awesome. What's your country, Ozzy?
This year, we were given Italy, which is very exciting.
Nice.
I know personally, I'm representing in the political committee, the special political committee about climate migration, so we're very excited. But we have a wide range of topics, and each topic, we're Italy, 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 like down the board. I know, I think we're in seven committees, six or seven committees, because some of them are dual committees, so that we have two students in then one committee. But yeah, overall, there's a lot of preparation, and I was going over the decision papers that we're sending then to, with responsible, and they're looking really good. There's a lot of work.
Awesome. Awesome. Thanks, Ozzy. What's the major export of Italy?
Oh, okay, but I'm not, I'm not the expert.
You're not on that committee? All right. That's the only thing I know about Italy.
Put you on the spot there, Ozzy.
Yeah, sorry, Ozzy. I thought, I thought you'd know. It's okay. When you, when you come back, you'll know.
I will know.
All right. Thanks, Ozzy.
Ozzy, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And we got a committee reports. We'll start with the Policy Committee.
All right. So we went through five policies, 0, 1, 1, 5, student harassment, bullying, present, prevention, and intervention. The committee reviewed the policy and decided to table it until the next policy committee meeting to explore some updated language regarding restorative approaches. The next one was 1120, school district records. Committee reviewed and discussed and recommended changes from the NYSBA, and will present the Board of Education at the first regarding one update in the draft policy provided by the committee. Public comment at the board meetings was 12:30. Committee reviewed the policy and decided to table it until the next policy committee meeting in order to get more clarification from the school attorney about the updated sample policy provided. School safety, plans, and teams. Committee reviewed, discussed, recommended changes, and will present them to the Board of Education as a first reading. The last one was 9520.6, policy on the rights of employees to express breast milk in the workplace, and the committee reviewed, discussed, and recommended changes from, and will present them to the Board of Education as a first reading. That's it.
Awesome. Operations Committee?
We spoke about our capital project. The initial numbers that Schoolhouse has given us shows we're about $2 million short on our budget to do the whole project. So a lot of the smaller, a lot of the smaller projects are going to the wayside. At the same time, the main part of it, the addition to our building, I believe we put them out to bid last week.
So the attendants put them out last week. However, SED has not given us the final approval. We did the third-party review to expedite the process. It's been slightly delayed, so we're kind of modifying our timeline. Our goal is to go out, be out for a month, and get the bids back. We're hoping to hear something. We're kind of calling SED every day to say, where are we at with this? What does it look like? But we need to get out soon with the bidding.
So the main part of our capital project, the building, was the wood pulled out of here, so we're going to be hoping to start in the spring instead.
Yeah, the hope is to have, our hope is, I don't have any wood to knock on, to have shovels in the ground, hopefully by April, if we can get everything set up. And then the other parts of the project are going to be alternate, alternates at this point in time, so everything will still be included, but they will be alternates in the process. And if we have additional funding as we start to run through, then we'll say, okay, that alternate might be put in. That's the process we're going to go with right now. The elementary addition and the playground are the two key points, and then the sand filter, the sand filtration system's the next big piece that we want to make sure we're including, and then we're going to kind of go down the list from there.
So in the initial budget, we had something, and someone correct me if I'm wrong, on the number. I feel like it was a $3 million contingency fund inside the original...
Like 11.1 million.
Yeah, but on, on top of that, we had a contingency fund.
I think the voters approved the $11 million. As my understanding is digging into this, is that that was what was put before the voters, was the 11.1?
We had like 1 million set aside to last a buffer for, you know, interest increases on it.
Okay, so, so we've exceeded the buffer already?
We only used 1.1 million as 11.1, so our PA system is done. That's the final, final number. These, these are Schoolhouse numbers. We haven't got any of the bids back yet. They're just going out now.
Roger.
So these bids could come back where we thought they were going to be? We won't know, but Schoolhouse is telling us they think we're about to make short.
Understood. And if it does turn out we're going to be short, are we going to have an idea of what those, kind of the smaller projects that maybe are going to...
Right, so the sand filter would be the main one that we got to do. Then, then we were taking one of these buildings down.
That might be part of it. It's also the hoods in the cafeteria, and then the grease trap on the main campus. Those are the other pieces that we really want to try to get done. So we're going to prioritize those alternates so that we can ensure that we're hitting the greatest to least need. They're all needed, but this is the least of those needs at this point. And Chris is right. This is, Schoolhouse took this, this piece, and I guess the original estimates were about two years old. I'm still trying to catch up on some of the pieces of this, but they were, they were a little bit older. That was VCA doing it. Schoolhouse then came in, did their own estimation, and they're, they're estimating a little bit higher, and that's where we're running into this, this piece right now. As bids come in, we may be able to say, hey, that alternate number two or three might be able to push right into it. There is a question of whether or not the sand filter system could actually be put into the base bid. We're just not sure yet. We were waiting on a couple more numbers.
Understood. Safety Committee?
I worked, I showed up late for the very end, so I can really tell you what we discussed at very end, and the PA system was brought up, being completed, and we were also talking about some doors out from the Cumberland Head Elementary that we were trying to figure out and fix for, that like the bottles were super loose, seemed like there was access from the public, hip, knee, knee, with people, obviously. But besides that, I just started working, missed the very beginning of it, so are those the doors we are here playing?
Understood.
Yeah, and we, as a follow-up to that, our security officers have actually done an entire kind of detail of the doors, and they provided a list to Gary to be able to say, here's some of the things, and, and some of the stuff that we think could be greater may not be as, as great for us to look at fixing, so that's going to be the next piece for us to discuss. Couple other things, we did go through, so our communications pushed out, I think it was last Monday, with the parking lot updates and just kind of, not even updates, but just making sure everyone had a common understanding of what our expectations were for arrival and dismissal. We actually created a website so we can direct people, you know, whoever is working with a member of the public, like, hey, we have a website that tells you kind of what this should look like, traffic flow patterns. We have our parking permits for our staff. They're here, now it's operationalizing that and getting them out to the staff members so they have that little parking tag. Those, I think, were the big pieces from, from the committee meeting. We had a couple other conversations, you know, after-school security, what could that look like, you know? We are open to the public outside of the school day.
With games.
Yeah, with games and stuff. And I think every school struggles with that to some extent, so we kind of talked about some ideas we could put in place. Another piece that was interesting is the fitness center. So the fitness center badge access was limited, but we found that if there's a lockdown and there could be a classroom in that location, they can't access that if they don't have badge access. So we, as a committee, said, we need to open that up so anyone with a badge could get in in the case of an emergency, to be able to leave behind secure doors. So that was a really good decision made at the committee level.
Actually, during their, our active shooter drill a couple years ago, I think some people hid up in the, hid up in the, I believe you were up there, right? You hid up in the fitness center?
Okay.
So, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so making sure that that access was available. And then there was a question about, will we do an evacuation drill this school year? So I kind of stated at the committee, I know there's different, different people look at the word evacuation a little differently. I know there's been total off-campus relocation. One thing that I discovered, you know, we took the lockdown piece, I discovered that we didn't key into doors, so we've addressed that. The second one is, we haven't traditionally done what's called a early release or go-home early drill. The state requires us to do, you can't leave more than 16 minutes before the end of the school day. It's a very odd time. We haven't done that in the past, to my knowledge, so we're going to implement that this year. We've got a tentative date lined up. We want to make sure we're not impacting any athletic events or anything that's related to school. So we've got a tentative date, but that will come into play. We'll communicate that all out, but that was a question that came up, that we, we have a plan for this year to implement that. We actually kind of did it last week, so that helps out tremendously. But I can't, I can't say, oh, the middle and high school don't have to do it, but the elementary will. We won't get the buses back in time, so...
Sure.
We're all going to practice again.
There you go.
But that's the, the big pieces.
And the Audit Committee?
Audit Committee met last week, and we went over the last couple months, October, November. Things are on track. If you look at the numbers, there was, there were bumps in expenses in November. Those are due to having three payrolls and two health insurance payments that were made Those are due to having three payrolls and two health insurance payments that were made in November. So everything looks on track for the year. I have asked for revision to this, that we also get percentages from year to year to compare. So at this point, if we're normally at 40%, and we're at 49%, I'm sure that's worrisome, but if we're still 41, 42, we're good. So they're going to work on revising that to give us, I think percentage is easier to look at than the big numbers.
Yeah.
Nothing out of the ordinary. Again, they're running four, five, six items in each audit that have, you know, some flaws in the system that they keep, you know, it's the same thing. And, you know, out of the hundreds of items they order every month, no problems that I can see.
Awesome.
Is there anything more to it?
No.
Great. Public comment. Do we have anybody here for public comment? Alright. Minutes. Resolved that Superintendent Schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes. Can I have a motion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. CSE, CPSE, and 504 recommendations. Resolved Superintendent Schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the CSE, CPSE, and 504 recommendations as dated 11/14/25. Can I have a motion?
Motion, John.
Second, David.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Consent agenda. Resolved Superintendent Schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, resignations, appointments, and retirement be and are hereby approved. Can I have a motion? Any discussions?
Can I just acknowledge that we have two retirees that are going before the board tonight? We will acknowledge them completely in our June meeting. That's when we tend to do all of the plaques at that point in time, but I just want to acknowledge the two retirees, Matt Toloski and Don Finley, both in their retirement paperwork, and that we'll honor them again in June, but I didn't want to not mention them because it's a big milestone for them.
Absolutely. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Miscellaneous. Resolved Superintendent Schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolution on the consent agenda revise 2024, 2025 school calendar and the side letter of understanding with the BTA evaluations be and are hereby approved. Can I have a motion?
Motion, John.
Second, David.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Nine, policies. All of these policies, school district records, school safety plan and teams, policy on the rights of employees to express breast milk in the workplace, these are all up for our first reading. Resolved Superintendent Schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following policies. Can I have a motion? Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Section 10, financial. Resolved Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, financial reports and donations be and are hereby approved. Can I have a motion? Who's that?
Dwayne. Second, Curry.
We have any discussions? So we'll call.
Troy Anderson?
Yes.
Drake Bean?
Yes.
Dwayne Devoe?
Yes.
Eric Deoque? John Fairchild?
Yes.
Christopher Gadway?
Yes.
Cory Jolker?
Yes.
Jason Miller?
Yes.
David Truitt?
Yes.
Public comment? Alright, moving on. Resolved that the Board of Education appoint John Fairchild as the clerk prosem for this meeting. Can I have a motion? Sorry, John.
That's okay. I got it now.
Discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Proposed executive session subject to board approval. Oh, did I miss something? Yep. I always miss additional items. Executive sessions.
I want to put out there, like, exploring, sort of possibly bringing lacrosse to Beakman Town, what it takes, if we can, if we can't. There's been a lot of community interest by a lot of younger students here and their parents. It might be a big step to do, but I don't know what it would take to get ball rolling on it.
Yep.
Or even if we can, but at least explore.
Out of curiosity, when we, I've never been in this situation before, but when we've brought new sports in, do we start like at a foundational level with like modified and build the program up? Or how does that generally work?
Depends on the metric, Greg.
Okay.
Get some new sport altogether, like we were one of the first schools to bring air rifle to the area.
Sure.
Well, Coral had a team and no one else.
Yep.
We got air rifle going, and I think there's a lot of other schools now that have kind of gotten on board, with exception of seven schools interested in doing that. Then you have, you know, other sports that may even exist, and for example, if we had a pool that we created, we might be able to create a swim team, even though there is swimming in the area.
Sure.
So lacrosse is interesting because we've had, several of our athletes have gone off to, we go to Peru for modified lacrosse. Modified lacrosse is seventh, eighth, and ninth grade.
Yep.
So they run a little differently. 10th, 11th, and 12th graders go to Plattsburgh High School for lacrosse, for varsity, for boys and girls. So we would have to look at, obviously, and we've met several times.
Oh yeah, Justin has been very accommodating about it. We've met a couple times.
I got to the point where I actually had a, probably a four-hour meeting with a few of the elementary teachers that are involved, with Mr. Crichetti being the main one.
Sure.
And Jeremy Kane that runs the local club for lacrosse, to actually start pulling data on students from kindergarten all the way up through that have shown interest, have gone to a camp, have been involved in club travel lacrosse, to see, is that feasible? Is that not feasible? And then looking at, obviously, the concerns that have been raised about, what does that do to our turf? If we play on the turf, what does that look like? Could we possibly create a field on our old football field? And then we started looking at, if the ball leaves the field and smashes into a car on the Haynes Road, like, what do we need fencing and a netting system like that on our turf? So we've actually spent...
It's going to be a big process, and maybe we start intermurals, and maybe we go that route to see what our numbers are.
Another sport that we started was flag football.
Yeah.
And that was the first people to sign up for that, and that has taken off, obviously, and then very, very quick. So I guess to answer your question, we've also done clubs like Skiing Club. We don't have a Nordic team, and that was a club that never materialized into an actual, we pared it bare down for that. So it really looks at, with doing it as a club, I don't know if we can do it because I think most of our kids would want to participate on the varsity team.
Yes.
If you're already playing varsity lacrosse, I don't know if you'd be interested in doing the bubble lacrosse just as well. The issue with lacrosse, not to get too deep into this here right now, is we don't have teams around us to be able to play. Section 10 is so full, their schedule is so full with lacrosse. This year, this past year, we almost didn't have a schedule for the Plattsburgh team to play because they had an odd number of teams in section 10 allowed us to join that league and play games.
Sure.
If they, St. Lawrence Central and some of these other schools break up mergers and they join the league, we're not going to have a schedule unless we travel to Albany, over to Vermont. We'd be traveling great distances to fill the schedule.
Justin, have you heard any interest from a lot of local schools at all? Are any local schools besides Plattsburgh PHS for lacrosse, or varsity lacrosse, or modified lacrosse?
Well, we really are the only schools that have started new sports in the last three, four years. Other than air rifle, there's been schools that have picked up that. There's been no real interest, and I think Plattsburgh, I don't know how interested they are in even keeping.
So I guess I have two questions. One is, at the Plattsburgh team, what percentage, what percentage of that team do Beakman Town students make up?
It really depends year by year.
Rough estimate?
In estimate, and Dwayne can correct me, about five kids on the varsity team?
Varsity team, yeah. Playing kids, probably one-third.
Okay.
But on the team, probably 20%.
Okay.
Varsity team had roughly 34, 35 kids try out.
Mm-hmm.
Modified team had 50. And what happens, because we are pulling from so many different schools, not last year, but the year before, Serenac Lake was playing for PHS.
Yep.
And when you look at traveling from Serenac Lake every day after school to come to Plattsburgh to play, it wasn't, it wasn't a good return on the investment for some of the students. Some of them continue to play. And then Serenac Lake had their own team, and what Justin said is 100% correct. We almost were not allowed or welcome to play in that section this year. And then, good or bad, we had a very good season at PHS, and at the end of the season, there wasn't any teams that would play us. We were also not allowed to play in the sectionals.
Gotcha.
So they'll, they'll invite you into the league, but they won't allow you to compete in the sectionals because they don't want the section 17 taking a spot of Franklin Academy, who's a section head member. But as soon as they get to a point where they have a number of teams, that lacrosse team at Plattsburgh will have no teams.
Gotcha.
Unless you want to travel three hours for a non-game on Tuesday night.
Sure.
Section 7 is the only section without a lacrosse representative?
There's just, we just, yeah.
Have we ever looked at just doing like an engagement survey with, you know, our, you know, like you said, like, you know, fifth grade?
I have the numbers.
Oh. Oh, that would want to play?
Our parents have reached out.
Already done it.
Okay.
So one of that meeting was to gather, because I didn't know, like, the little kids. We don't know, like, in third grade, how many kids are showing up to the interest thing that they offer. So we were able, in that meeting with Jeremy Kane and Mr. Crichetti, to actually pull, I have it in my office, list of kids by grade, how many are Beakman Town and how many are not. What would it cost us to put up the structures that we would need? We even got down into like Plattsburgh lacrosse, that if we started it, that they would actually buy like nets for us.
Yep.
They would donate the nets to our school. So we got quite, quite deep in it.
Yeah.
My other concern, another metric we always want to look at, girls lacrosse and boys lacrosse are two very different sports.
Mm-hmm.
And we look at, like, the Peru modified team, you have ninth-grade boys, I use Edward Tweener as an example, playing against seventh-grade girls. That's a concern I have, sending our ninth-grade boys playing against, you know, people that may not be physically ready to handle some of the riggers that the ninth-grade boy might be.
Understood.
That's another concern. But all four are just going to cost money.
And I was going to bring it up last month, but we had the death of the family. So I talked to Jen about it a little bit because the budget is coming up. It should have been brought up last month.
Sure.
But this year could be a pipe dream, but...
Yep.
Just check to see what our interest is, maybe we intermurally it for a year, see how our numbers are. I don't know, I don't know a way to go about it, but...
But even with intermuraling it, like, I mean, we, and I know that the games that are potentially playing it with Plattsburgh is in flux season to season, right, with the number of teams? But in theory, I mean, intermuraling it at least builds a pipeline, right, for kids to be able to play at Plattsburgh if they have, if Plattsburgh's invited to play.
I'm just putting myself in, like, I'll use Mr. Gadway's daughter, like, she's great in air rifle, right? Like, let's say we have a merger with Northeastern equipment and air rifle. So she's competing at the varsity level there. If we didn't start an air rifle team, and we did it as a club, I don't know if Mac would come down here and play in our club and not play in our varsity. I think she would want to continue to compete varsity level and compete at states.
Yep.
That's what I think would happen, but I could be wrong.
Oh, makes sense.
Because it is offered in varsity. Well, can I ask one last question about this? This is likely one of the bigger questions of, if you offer lacrosse as a boy or a girl sport, do you have to offer the other one? Is that a title line issue of that?
It doesn't have to be the other. They look more equity of how many male sports do you offer, female sports? Number of female athletes you have. So if you had 70% of your athletes are male and you have 30% female, that's going to become, that's a title line issue.
Okay.
So they don't look at like by score. So if you look at some seasons, actually, we have more female sports offered than we do boys. But if you look at how many football players you have on the team, there's a difference.
Yep.
So you may want to look at intermurally at our club sport at younger age?
What I would want to do is work with Todd Mullins, other intermurally young athletes at EDF. And we start offering this and then do something that comes up ahead where we work with those advisors to see what the interest would be. But really, the interest is the Plattsburgh Lacrosse Club, with Jeremy Kane saying, here's all your kids that are playing lacrosse in third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade. Those are serious lacrosse families. Now, the other metric is, if you have the sport here, I do think you would have more people be interested in playing than having to transfer to Plattsburgh or transfer to Peru. I think the numbers would increase.
I've even, parents have went as far, who are very involved in like the Plattsburgh at younger ages, like, they're telling me they can raise by $6,000. Fundraise and stuff to help out, to offset. I don't know the effect of that. I don't know any of the logistics of it, but...
Actually, we have an employee on campus that coaches lacrosse, coach of the that are as well. Like, if this ever happened, would you be interested in? He says 100%. That's what we're...
Yeah, Justin's done a lot of legwork already. He and I had a conversation about lacrosse. It's funny you brought it up. And again, it's that. Yeah.
Well, thank you. And so there is a proposed executive session on the agenda. Resolved that the Board of Education entered into executive session to discuss the employment of a particular person or persons. Can I have a motion?
Motion, Curry. Second, David.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And I don't see any business coming out of this executive session. Obviously, if you want to stick around, please feel free to, but I don't see any votes coming out of this executive session.